All right, I'm gonna quickly go over those corrections that we made. The Select Board meeting was called to order at 6:40. We went over who's in the room. First error, first correction, page one, under 2022-23 Budget Discussion, first sentence, cross out "Lister's end." It was noted that the Lister's and the Auditor's "Lister's end" needs to be dropped. Same page, underneath "Information Found Out About the Athens Collection," one, two. The third sentence down, need to strike the term, the words, "The people paying first, paid most," just strike that.
Okay.
No changes on page two. On page three, under, in the middle of the page where it says "Using the Bridge Culvert Municipal Bond Money." Ms. Maggio discussed the municipal bond, it should say $90,000, you left off with zero.
Uh-huh.
Okay. Page four. Under "Email," Gary LaBourne has suggested contacting John Pallou for Select Board interest.
How do you spell Pallou?
P-A-L-L-O-U.
Okay.
Okay. Move on to page five. On page five, I had some things that I shouldn't have done earlier, but I cannot find my notes. The Select Board did go into executive session at the end of the evening, Peter, as you know. When we came out of executive session, I did make a statement that no motions nor votes or discussions of, were, no motions or votes were taken on anything discussed during an executive session. We resumed the open meeting at nine.
I think it was about nine oh five.
About nine oh five, okay, that sounds good. David moved and Bruce seconded, striking the amended accounts payable warrant motion. No, I moved to strike the, what was it, David, I would.
I think I moved, I have a motion.
Yeah, I had G. Okay, I had G, so David moved and Bruce seconded, striking the amended accounts payable warrant. It should remain the same at, what, $19,314.37, which is the original amount produced by the Treasurer. The difference of $750, which was the code in code, we found this pay in a previous month. So we needed to strike the amendment, which was on the bottom of page, the motion at the bottom of page four, where we increased accounts payable, we want to just drop it, okay. And then, Dorothy Maggio made a motion to adjourn the meeting and the meeting was, Sam Noga seconded it, and the meeting ended about 9:20?
Yeah.
Approximately 9:20.
All right.
Okay, all right, so that is for our minutes.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
When you started, you indicated that the meeting on the fifth started at nine, six forty? Were you thinking of today's start? I think we started on time that day at six thirty.
Okay, no, tonight's meeting started at six forty.
Today's, but not that.
That meeting, yes, it started at six thirty, otherwise, yes. That's okay, so we got that, the meeting started at six thirty, which is what's on here.
Tonight, tonight was at six thirty?
No, tonight was at six forty. Yeah, the January twelfth, today's meeting, the nineteenth, we started at six forty. We had some technical difficulties, so, all right. Now we're moving on through the agenda.
So I would make a motion that we approve those minutes from January fifth as amended.
I second that motion, all those in favor, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes from January fifth as amended, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes. Next we'll take a look at the minutes from January 12th, Special Brookline Select Board Meeting. Is there any, anybody have any changes that they would like to see amended to the draft minutes from January 12th?
I just had one thing, which is I think actually under the budget notes, you have a vote to accept the report is needed on January 19, 2022, or a special meeting will have to be held during last week in January. I think what you probably meant was a vote to accept the warning, town meeting.
Oh, yes, to accept the warning.
I didn't want it to make it sound like the Auditor's report had to be accepted by the Select Board, which it doesn't, and nor does it have to be done tonight.
I did see that in another paperwork that came across my mail, so, all right, I will amend that. I will say a vote to accept the warning is needing on, needed on January 19th. Any other items on this draft agenda? Hearing none, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes from the Special Brookline Meeting from January 12th as amended. May I have a second? Seconded by Gwen, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of approving the draft minutes from January 12th, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, the draft minutes will be amended and sent by. Under Old Business, we did, the other item that I forgot to mention, under Old Business, we are going to reorganize the A, B, C, D parts. We're going to right now vote to use Australian ballot and mail to residents first, and then follow with drafting, the draft of the town meeting morning. Then we'll talk about town report and the informational hearing details.
Can we just back up one second and just note that there are no members of the public?
There are no members of the public in the room. We have a real supervisor and Guy Tans of Town Clerk and the Opera here, Bruce Mello is absent today. And yeah, just that TV is online. Okay, vote to use the Australian ballot and to mail to residents. As you will hear, the Governor of Sapp signed both of the bills regarding the emergency election decisions for annual meetings, S 172 and S 2.3. We do, at this time, signatures for candidates for local offices are not required, so on and so forth. I do have the legislation in front of me if anyone would like to review it. Okay, go ahead.
No, no.
So if, let's just say the body votes to use the Australian ballot system for articles that are otherwise typically voted from the floor, we must have an informational hearing. The warning may not contain any questions on whether the municipality shall adopt the Australian ballot and so on and so forth. So I would like to make a motion that the town of Brookline for the 2022 town meeting to be run by Australian ballot on February 28, 2022.
I'll second your motion.
Any discussion? Hearing none, all those present, all those who are, all those who are in favor of holding the 2022 town meeting by Australian ballot, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the motion passes, Brookline will be using Australian ballot this year for our voting. On Monday, the 28th of February, the town clerk will run the vote here in person from 9:00 to 7:00 PM as normal.
Well, that, I guess, I mean, I just want to clarify, that is part of the warning that we have yet to vote on.
Oh, okay. All right, so.
We've merely voted to have Australian.
Vote that.
The details of that are what we determine in the warning, which we will now discuss and vote on.
Okay. The mailing of these Australian ballots to residents, is that something we can vote on, we can just do that?
Well, I guess I'm, to be honest, I'm not sure I understand what you mean by that. I mean, we did not last year mail, proactively mail.
No, they have to be requested.
People can request ballots and they are sent to them. And I assume we would do it the same way.
All right, I just was reading through here and I must have gotten myself a little overwhelmed in the.
Well, again, I think to highlight, Governor, I think, and some legislature legislators wanted there to be money made available so that towns could, like we're now going to do for other elections, proactively mail ballots to all the voters in town in this situation. But that was not part of the legislation and there's no money being made available this year for us to do that.
No, the only election will be the November general election.
Right.
All right, all right, so we'll move then on, since we have voted to, vote to use the Australian ballot for this year, we'll move on to reviewing the draft of town meeting warning. David, again, thank you very much for setting this up. Everybody have a copy of it from one of them?
So what I'm gonna suggest, like we've done in years past, as painful as this is, I would suggest that I read the entire batch, the entire warning. And then, once I have read, well, I'm gonna make a motion that we approve this. I'm gonna read the entire thing.
And then we'll vote after you.
And then we'll, presumably, somebody will second it, at least at that point. And then we can have discussion if there are points that people are, if there's any confusion over, if we want to make any changes to it, stuff like that. Does that seem sensible?
Yep.
Okay, and Peter, I'll send you this after the fact. You don't have to worry about capturing the details of this. So I.
Is it okay?
Oh. So I would like to make a motion that we approve the following warning for the 2022 Brookline Town Meeting, I guess. So, which reads as follows, warning for 2022 Brookline Town Meeting. The legal voters of the town of Brookline are hereby warned to meet in the Brookline Town Office in said town on Monday, February 28, 2022, between the hours of 9:00 AM and 7:00 PM to transact the following business by Australian ballot. Article one, to elect all town officers required by law. Town moderator for a term of one year, town clerk for a term of one year, town treasurer for a term of one year, delinquent tax collector for a term of one year, select board member for a term of three years, select board member for a term of two years, lister for a term of three years, lister for a term of two years, remainder of an open three-year term, lister for a term of one year, remainder of an open three-year term, auditor for a term of three years, cemetery commissioner for a term of five years, trustee of public funds for a term of one year. Article two, shall the town accept the Auditor's report? Article three, shall the town vote to approve the general and highway fund expenditures, net of non-tax budgeted revenues for the town as follows. Amount to be raised by taxes for general fund, $145,667. Amount to be raised by taxes for highway fund, $232,367. Total municipal taxes to be raised, $378,034. Article four, shall the town authorize the collection of taxes? Sorry, I'm sorry, I just heard feedback or something. Sorry, article four, shall the town authorize the collection of taxes in four installments, with the due dates being August 16, 2022, November 15, 2022, February 16, 2023, May 16, 2023? Shall the voters appropriate $250 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of American Red Cross? That was article five, if I didn't start by saying that. Article six, shall the voters appropriate $125 to be raised in taxes in continuing support of CRT, the current river, the current Connecticut River Transit? Article seven, shall the voters appropriate $300 to be raised in taxes in continuing support of Grace Cottage Foundation? Article eight, shall the voters appropriate $50 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Greenup Vermont? Article nine, shall the voters appropriate $300 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Groundworks Collaborative? Article 10, shall the voters appropriate $250 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Historical Society of Wyndham County? Article 11, shall the voters appropriate $250 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Leland and Gray Education Foundation? Article 12, shall the voters appropriate $700 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Morfree Library? Article 13, shall the voters appropriate $100 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Rural Fire Protection Program? Article 14, shall the voters appropriate $700 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Senior Solutions? Article 15, shall the voters appropriate $465 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Seth Cup? Article 16, shall the voters appropriate $1,590 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Southeastern Economic Development Strategies, or ESSD? Article 17, shall the voters appropriate $500 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Summit Vermont Therapeutic Writing Center? Article 18, shall the voters appropriate $130 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Southeastern Water Shuttle Lines? Article 19, shall the voters appropriate $100 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of VABVI Vermont Association for the Blind? Article 20, shall the voters appropriate $821 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Valley Cares, Inc.? Article 21, shall the voters appropriate $80 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Vermont Center for Independent Living? Article 22, shall the voters appropriate $250 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Vermont Family Network? Article 23, shall the voters appropriate $1,000 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Visiting Nurse Alliance? Article 24, shall the voters appropriate $500 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Wyndham County Humane Society? Article 25, shall the voters appropriate $650 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Women's Freedom Center? Article 26, shall the voters appropriate $255 to be raised by taxes in continuing support of Youth Services? Article 27, shall the voters appropriate $500 to be raised by taxes in support of The Gathering Place? Article 28, shall the town vote to collect its current taxes by its town treasurer pursuant to 32 VSA 4791? Article 29, shall the voters approve the appropriation of up to $22,000 for recycling costs for fiscal year 2023? Article 30, shall the voters approve the appropriation of $20,000 to establish a budget stabilization slash rainy day fund? Polls open at Brookline Town Office, February 28, 2022, from 9:00 AM to 7:00 PM, dated this 19th day of January 2022. Dorothy Maggio, Bruce Mello, we will strike that, since Bruce is not in attendance. Gwendolyn Tanso, Sam Noga, David Jones.
I'd like to second that. Any discussion? Hearing none, all those.
So can I just ask, does anybody have any lingering questions about the amounts that are warned in Article three for the general fund, highway fund, and then the total? Let me just very quickly recap where those numbers come from, just so that there's no confusion. The budget that we have developed has a total for Fund One, the operating budget, the non-highway budget. It has a total for operating expenditures. That total is $168,707. That includes all of the expenditures that we have budgeted for that, with the exception of recycling services and any of the appropriations. Because those are warned, like we just read, separately, so those will be voted up or down on their own. So they're not factored into this number that we're voting as part of Article three. You take that expenditures total of $168,707 and you subtract what we have budgeted for revenue for that fund, which is $23,040, and you come up with $145,667. And that's, so that is the number that's included in that Article for the operating fund. Makes sense to everybody? Anybody have any questions about that?
No.
The second number is for the highway fund. So again, from our budget that we've just developed, we have an expenditure line item at the bottom of the budget for the highway fund, which came out to $272,517 for expenditures. Again, like we did with the operating, we subtract the budgeted revenues that we have for that fund, which are $40,150. And you come up with $232,367, which is the highway number. And then basically, you add those two numbers together and that's where we get the total municipal taxes to be raised of $378,034.
Excuse me, the tax revenue on the highway fund, and you're saying we have revenue of how much?
$40,150 is what we budgeted.
Okay, I thought the state, the state highway mileage thing was, isn't that in the highway fund?
Yep, and we budgeted $40,000 for that.
So that's the only revenue that we have?
No, no, we have $40,000 in state aid, we have $50 in permit revenue, and $100 in interest on investment is what we did. But it's primarily the state aid.
Okay.
And again, this is, this is non-tax revenue.
Right, right, okay.
Now I know that in the past, we have ended up receiving more than that from the state. But when we had this whole discussion, we decided to budget $40,000.
Okay.
So that's why that number is.
All right, no, I realize this year was 50 grand, but that's fine.
Any other questions about how those numbers came to be or anything that we think might be wrong with that number?
No, I think, I think very thorough and thorough, and our response, responsibility is met.
So yeah, if there are any other questions about the discussion, I would just go.
I'll second that. All right, all those in favor of approving the warning for the 2022 Brookline Town Meeting as read and explained by Mr. David Jones, please signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any extensions? The warning has been approved as written.
So, so just to recap, the one change that I will make to it before I send it to the auditors is I will just remove Bruce's line from the signature line, since he wasn't here to actually vote on it. But otherwise, it remains the same.
All right, so we're still down in item five. We completed item five A and item five B. Item five C, town report discussion.
Uh, yeah, the town report.
Okay.
It's January 19th. The, I mean, I'm assuming that people agree with following the same approach that we've taken over the last several years, which is we pared down what goes into the town report. We still have the warning, obviously, we have the contents, we have the general stuff. We have the warning, we have the town officers elected and appointed. We have the minutes from, we have the Auditor's report, which is the main thing that we are, we have to include in it. That obviously has to be provided to me by the auditors, hopefully by the end of month. It has minutes from the last town meeting, which are the minutes from the informational hearing that we.
No, basically, the town meeting minutes were the results of the Australian ballot. Oh, you're talking about, yeah.
From last year, yeah. What would constitute the minutes?
Well, what I did is I took, I did a paragraph saying that this was based upon the COVID-19, the town unanimously voted to have Australian ballot and the following other results from the town ballot, so I mean.
Okay, it's on the side, okay, so, so we'll pull back, so that would be considerably shorter than.
Yeah, it's one page, I think, or two pages.
We'll trim quite a few pages from the report because we won't have as much, so I would say as a few pages. We have been doing a Select Board report, last year's, the one I did last year was very brief. I don't think it needs to be a lot. The thing, one thing that I will say is what would probably be good to include in it would be, like I did last year, would be a mention of the informational hearing. Now, whether people are gonna physically get this before the informational hearing, in all cases, they probably, people aren't necessarily all gonna get this, this, this thing by then. But if people haven't, if people have gotten it, I think it would be good to mention that.
I can also, after, I can get that to you, work this out this weekend, and if you.
Yeah, if you can get it to me sometime next week, whenever, that would be great.
And I do plan on starting to send out more information to the lister and I could actually put the Select Board, my report on the lister, which will have information about the informational meeting.
Good idea, yeah, I mean, I think what we, well, as I recall, last year, we did a blast about stuff also, about just sort of the election essential.
Yolke Wenz report, she did the dog report, the marriage.
Uh, yes, yeah.
I can give you a copy of it right now, because I've got it done.
Well, I need it, yeah, you can.
Yeah, we'll send it to you.
Send it to me, I need everything electronic.
Town meeting.
When you've got the town report organizing ready to send to print, to printer, is it possible to put it on the town website?
Yeah, I would, I do.
We do that after, after it's gone to the printer, we have to provide it to the state in electronic form for the archives. And at the same time, I give Guy a PDF of it and he posts it on the website.
Okay.
Yeah. The other thing I'll say is that I, you know, assuming there's time, I will send it around to all of you to proofread as much as possible. The, so yeah, the dog, the dog report and the delinquent tax report, do we have any?
Yes.
Whatever we have, and the vital records.
$149.
Yeah, okay, so that stuff, we need, there have historically been, so flipping back through again, there's the proposed budget, which, again, I think in agreement with the auditors, is gonna be formatted a little bit differently than it has been in past, but it'll be the same basic information. It might take up a little less space, maybe, might not, I'm not sure. There is a report of Brookline estimated tax rates that the Treasurer has always produced. I don't know.
Actually, when I spoke to Heidi Geiser tonight, she said that Frank would like our information so that he could put together tax rate, tax rate data for the community. So maybe the treasurer worked with Frank in the past, I'm not sure.
I don't know, the treasurer's always done it, but whatever they agreed to.
Okay, I mean, that, and there's also, we've, historically, there's been a consolidated balance sheet report that has gone in. There's usually been, there has always been a report on meeting house and school building funds. Just a basic report about the fund balances and stuff.
When do the balance, I'm trying to think of one, now that we've got the approval, which didn't come until one o'clock this afternoon. Of the governor saying that we don't need to have certificates of, uh, of elects, I mean, I'm sorry, candidates. Because I'd have to have a, uh, signatures, so.
So you're going to do another history.
We need to put something in the, uh.
I think we need to finish, can we finish talking about the town report?
Oh, okay.
First, um, so, the, I mean, like I say, I mean, you're, I'll, I'll figure all this stuff out. Uh, I need the auditor's report from the auditors, I can find the minutes on the website, the guy's already done, you'll do the select board reports. I'll have the budget, so I can put that in, but yeah, the estimated tax rates, I mean, I'll send the warning to, I'll send the warning in the spreadsheet, once I've cleaned up the spreadsheet to the auditors, but they've, I guess, they've got to produce the estimated tax rates, if they want to do it. And the balance sheet and whatever else. I mean, I'm honestly not sure that we're required to include these, the estimated tax rates and the consolidated balance sheet stuff.
Right, I, I know Heidi said that, uh, just said that he likes to do that, so it'd be, that's something that he's done on the, once again. If not, it's not required, correct?
Um, uh, okay, so yeah, so those guys, if, if they can produce those things, and then when we send the other stuff.
So the vital records?
Vital records, delinquent tax, the dog, and the dog report, yeah. Cool, thank you. And yeah, I mean, in theory, I'll do it over the last weekend in January, probably. And then I have to have it to the printer during that following week, the first, February first, second, something like that, so. Assuming I get everything in time, and I'll remind Frank and those guys of the timing of things when I send them this stuff.
Good, all right.
So, assuming there's time, we'll all be able to produce a PDF of it and post it for people to be able to quickly read through.
Anyone run short of time, anything that needs to make a hand or foot or symbolize, let me know.
Excellent.
All right, um, so that's ten, or anything else on this?
I don't think so, no.
So, um, I did pull off your, uh, notes from last year's on the website for the, uh, informational hearing details. Oh, actually, this is the minutes from the, okay, so I have your Canada Brookline remote public informational hearing notice and agenda from, uh, last year.
Yeah, and I can produce that same one with just the new information and things.
Okay, so, um.
I would suggest that that be something that's on our February second agenda.
Okay.
Um, because the only, I think in order to meet the timing that we kind of, that we need to meet for things, I think probably on February second. We need to finalize the warning for that informational hearing meeting, which is really just gonna be, just warming another meeting, so there's not a lot to it. Other than the structure of it is that, that's the agenda for it.
For that.
Follows a certain structure.
Right, and, um.
But we also have to have some discussion about, are we going to do it fully remotely? Or are we going to try to have some kind of hybrid thing, stuff like that?
All right, so we'll discuss that for next.
I mean, we could discuss that now, I guess, it might be easier if we decided now what we wanted to do, so we knew what the.
Well, the governor said that you can do the whole thing virtual.
Yeah, I, I'll say that I really think you should do it all.
I, I think that.
That isn't to say that one or more of us can't be here conducting that, but to open it up to people to potentially come physically and also online, it's going to become challenging, and I, and we don't, we're not required to do it, so I don't think we should do it that way. We, we give everyone, like we did last, and you sat through some of it, we give people painstaking opportunities as to dialing with a phone, nobody has to log in on a computer to access it, there's a phone number that you can dial. We have to go through with people how to mute and unmute themselves on all the various devices, which takes up part of the time, but I think we are, we are more than fulfilling our obligation if we do it through Zoom and have people join that way personally, that's how I feel, but.
I've seen, we're going to have the town meeting done, and then turn around, do another thing, pretty, revising your meeting, it just doesn't make sense.
Exactly, exactly. So.
So consistency would be the way to go.
Right. So, all right, so, um, this is not necessarily, is it a vote that we need to do to have the informational hearing details done, or vote in at all?
Uh, no, I don't think it is, well, no, I mean, not really, I think we just, we decided to warn it that way, the way we would decide to warn a special meeting, or I mean, it's basically, it's a special select board meeting that we're warning.
Right.
The agenda for it needs to have that detail. So it's different than our normal agendas because of that, and I'll update all of that with the new stuff, so it reflects. Because it contains the entire.
Right.
The agenda is basically, I mean, the agenda shows, tells people how they can get to the meeting.
Right.
But then, basically, the agenda of the meeting is reading through the entire warning.
Right.
Line by line, and giving people an opportunity to ask questions.
Right, is that online?
Yes, I pulled this offline.
Okay, what don't you look under?
I looked under previous, previous agendas, uh, January, uh, previous agendas and.
Yeah, from February twenty-fourth. So I'll, um, I will produce the same thing with our, and we decided this year on February twenty-third. Starting at six-thirty, we all are comfortable with that.
February twenty-third for the informational meeting.
Yeah, okay, so I can produce, I can get that ready for the next meeting, just so that we can make sure we're clear on all of it.
Thank you.
Uh, Guy, I think this gets to your point, I would suggest that one of the things we definitely have to vote on at the next meeting is the ballot.
Right.
We need to approve the actual ballot for the election.
Right, I have to have that by.
Because you have eighteen. Yeah, yeah, so if we approve it on the second.
I'm sorry, by the eighth, excuse me.
Right, I thought, yeah.
Twenty days prior to the.
So we approve it on the second, and then you've got plenty of time to get to make some copies and be ready for it.
Yep.
So.
The other thing is that I may, uh, put a copy of that candidate file form on the internet. Because we have until, I believe, the twenty-eighth to have them file, it was the fifteenth, I believe, but it's been extended, I've got it extended to the Secretary of State. And it may, I thought he said till at least the twenty-fourth, but I'm going to see if I can push that to the twenty-eighth for for the candidates to respond with their certificate of, uh, eligibility.
Oh, so that's a really, really good point, so wait, so, so, right, I, because of our because of our Monday town meeting, which I just want to throw out there again, I voted against. I want no, I want to be very clear, I voted against that when it was approved. But because of that, technically, by statute, the candidate request, candidate forms were due two days ago. So, so you got them to extend it, do you think, to January twenty-eighth?
Uh, to the twenty-fourth, I know, but I'm going to call tomorrow, see if I can get it pushed to the twenty-eighth.
Okay.
I spoke to the Secretary of State last week, and he gave me the waiver. Um, but again, because we're getting this last minute stuff done.
Yeah.
They may be pretty easy with extending those timeframes, because, you know, today is the first day that I can actually.
Do anything, because we just voted today.
Well, right now, I know it's still the twenty-fourth, but I'll see if I can get it extended to the twenty-eighth.
So.
For the form, if, that's for the.
A candidate's form, yeah, someone who's running for election has to, uh, file a form with the town clerk. And normally, you had to file it with, uh, a petition with fifteen or whatever, that's been waived, they just have to file the consent form. But again, that just happened today, so two days after the due date.
Right, so a thing to note about the extension of that is that we obviously can't produce the ballot until we know who's running for it. So if we extend it beyond the twenty-eighth, it's not going to be super easy for us to vote on it the second. I mean, I need some time to be able to plug people's names into things, I mean, we could go until.
I have right now the thirty-fourth.
Probably, you could go to the thirty-first, if you're really.
I, I have to check that with the Secretary of State.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, I mean, if, if the Secretary of State was okay with it, and you wanted it. My personal view is that I don't actually think a few days is going to make a lot of difference, but I think if, if we let people know soon, um, which is something we should discuss. If we let people know soon, then we give people, you know, a week. Then I don't think a couple of days beyond that's going to make a difference.
What's the drop date, I guess my question, what was the drop date for you for the ballot?
Well, I mean, I think the thirty-first.
Okay, all right, so I can, I can talk with you, and I give you a message, say, this is what I have, and.
Exactly, yeah, yeah.
Excellent.
Wow, so the ballot is gonna, is gonna look just the same as we did last year, it'll have a different date. And different year, but it'll largely be the same. I mean, different names potentially for some of the things, some of the positions will be slightly different, we're losing the town grand juror. But we're adding, so at least, we're adding two articles, so I gotta squeeze two more articles in somehow. I'm gonna, I will continue to, I will make it no longer than three pages again, I'll make sure it stays three pages anyway.
So you want to do, did we do three separate pages last year?
I think you did, because it just was.
It was easier to count.
Yeah, it was easier to count, it's been less confusing for people when they're.
Okay, that'll be good.
So I just have them stacked, so I didn't, I didn't staple it, because that way they knew there were three pages.
Yeah, yeah, I think that worked very well, the way you did it, so I think we should do it the same way.
Because people didn't remember to turn it around on the backside, so.
All right, now, Stan, yeah, sir.
Yeah, we speak up, Stan, I, 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 it's tough to be at the chair and looking at, watching people, it's like, that is, Dan.
Pick me.
No, you don't want to hurt anyone. Uh, do we, can we, uh, send a notice for anyone that I'm interested in running for an office on the front porch forum and the board website?
Then put it together.
She did, okay, okay, great, thank you. No, you, I didn't put it together, because you said, hold up, because we haven't got approval of doing that yet, okay, so it wasn't done.
No, it's not done yet, but we're gonna do it today. It's, it's not.
So I never, I've never posted on the front porch forum, so it's just the little button up there?
Yeah, I'll show you.
Okay.
The worst that could possibly happen is, they ask you to format it differently than how you sent it.
No, yeah, no, I, I've done a lot, I've done a lot of things on there.
They don't take that, you have to re-enter it immediately.
So it's just a, the town of Brooklyn wants, the town of Brooklyn wants to, you know.
I think it would probably make sense to say, and I don't can't, I honestly can't remember whether we said this last year when we did. But I think it would make sense to say that the town of Brookline will be voting all of its positions on Australian ballot.
I may have sent.
Maybe the day, I'll work with it, maybe I can just.
And the deadline for, for submitting a consent of, consent of whatever else, X.
Yeah.
I don't have a.
Consent of, uh.
To make sure people understand that they have to decide now, they can't wait.
This is so crazy, we don't.
Form is available online.
Yeah, I'm gonna put it on, I'm gonna put it online, I don't know. I'm gonna check with the Secretary of State to make sure that we can do electronically, uh, which I'm hoping, again, we have ten days to do everything. It's pretty crazy.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I'll probably talk to you on Friday, um, about this, I'll put you on, and, and, I'll get it together with you, all right?
Yeah, because I don't have a list of groups doing what and where and.
We'll find it, I got it, we're, we'll see.
Okay, all right, I can't do it tomorrow, but I can do, I'll try it at half time. All right, anything else on the, on the old business? Information, oh, all right, we're gonna, thank you very much, David, for.
Yeah, you're amazing, you're, you're diamond.
Um, the other thing is, let me, before we move out of here, the, uh, town moderator in the past, David, and you were both online last year, you as the chairperson of the select board. David as the moderator, correct, during the informational hearing?
Um, yeah, we, yeah, I mean, last year, we decided to ask David, and he graciously agreed to act as a moderator for the discussion, um, just because we thought it would make things go better, and, you know, he's used to, he's used to doing that, and the other thing is that I mean, we're, we're probably better equipped now to do it, but at the time, I had to administrate the Zoom meeting. And to both.
Jumble it.
To do that and administrate the Zoom meeting at the same time, well, I mean, in the end, it would have been fine since two of you, two people showed up. But we didn't know how many people might show up, so we thought, because it, logistically, the Zoom part of it, if quite a few people were to show up, the Zoom administration part of it is going to be a task, for sure.
Address each person.
Well, because what we, I mean, you'll see, I, I can't remember whether we put it in a.
Well, we follow Robert's law.
So, yeah, um, well, but, well, but there's, but there's a lot of things that involve, that are involved electronic meetings, that have nothing to do with our rituals. But, I mean, we, we automatically muted everyone when they joined the call. So we had to, at the beginning, explain to people, you've got to keep yourself muted, if you're using a computer, you've got to raise your hand if you want to be recognized, I mean, we used a lot of the Zoom administrative stuff um, to keep it under control, and you have to explain that to people, and you have to explain to them not only how to do all of those things, mute and unmute and raise your hand. Not only if they're using a computer or a smartphone, but you have to explain to them how to do that if they've merely dialed in on a phone using whatever, Star Six and stuff like that. So there are things that have to be explained to people. I have, I think, an entire, I think I typed it up for myself. I have an entire list of talking points of like the administration of the meeting that I prepared, which I can send to you.
Now, are you going to administer the meeting, or?
Well, I don't know, it's something we have to figure out, I guess I'd suggest we figure that out next week when we, in two weeks, whenever. When we talk through that stuff, I mean, I'm happy to do that, um, but that also be, if, if, if I'm going to administrate that stuff, then I'm not reading the articles. So somebody else is doing that, and somebody else is.
Well, that'd be something I can do, read the articles?
Yeah, I mean, I guess it also raises the question of whether we, I mean, I think you were going to reach out to David to see whether, to see. Is he willing to? Is he willing to moderate this because it's going to be completely electronic? Or.
No, I wasn't sure, I should, I, I lost my last sheet of paper which had those things on it, so I will read. I looked up to David, that's right.
Well, so we can discuss the structure of that next time, when we have time to figure that out.
Are we?
Man.
Yeah. Okay, so I think we've worked through that part of the A, B, C, and D of the old business. Anything else before we move to turn the page on our agenda to, um, highway contract maintenance, winter plowing contracts? All right, um. Going through some paperwork, I had noticed that the, um, two-year winter plow contract, while the bid was won by AS Sparking Suns in September of twenty. Twenty, we did not have the, uh, contract per se with the articles and the scopes and services and the compensations and so on and so forth on file. Um, and I wanted to get that on file so I could send this out to everyone to review, um.
Was there, was there amendments and those kinds of things?
There were, this was straight from the same contract that was done previous year.
But it says there was addendum, I think there was no addendum attached to this. Where did I see? Article one contract documents, this contract and the addendum attached here too, I didn't see an addendum.
Was the addendum the last page, the, uh?
I'm sorry, should we, oh, down here, this contract we need, I'm gonna attach it to shut us. Well, it may be the, um.
The last page of the.
Um, it may be this addendum, which is the, uh. Uh, sand bid and the snow plowing bid, that would, those would be the addendums. So I apologize, I did not send this out to you.
Uh, maybe I could make.
I can make some comments to everybody. So, all right, so these needs, so that would go as the addendum, uh, for.
How many copies do you need?
Uh, we need five pieces.
Five pieces.
Thank you, bye.
So, in our, I may, oh, one more question, yes, sir, this isn't due to expire until, uh. Uh, in this year, twenty twenty-two, I guess.
Right, what we had on file expired, was written.
It looks like this might have been an original content, September twenty twenty. And it doesn't expire until September or end of August twenty twenty-two?
Right, I quickly typed it for me, with the new dates on it.
Oh, this is a, you have to change.
Yes, oh, yeah, we changed dates on, because originally it was, uh, two years.
For the previous two years. Contract, it expired back in September.
September, correct. And so I wanted to have something in the final.
Now I understand, thank you.
So the only thing that was changed in it, since this is a two-year contract and it's the same.
Right, it expired two years, whatever, September.
Thank you.
Those are the events, so, um. If you're convinced to take a look at it, but then I, I'm making wish that we approve this contract and then I will send it out and ask the representatives. From the, uh, AS Clark to sign it and return it to town or then I will sign it and. We'll put it on the file so that we have.
Sam, uh, I, I saw parts of this. And I didn't know if it was, this was something that others accepted and I should just stay quiet? Or, uh, or is there an openness to, uh, looking at new phraseology? Or how do you wanna handle that?
I think since, okay, because I didn't wanna change, I didn't wanna change any wording.
It's already been signed.
Because we were delinquent in providing the written contract and they are working under the impression of the same exact rules applied for this two-year contract. As the one they signed two years ago, so I did not change anything on it and, um. Yeah.
The only, sorry.
Well, that was, that was it, see, this is.
Uh, the only thing I guess I would say is if. Um, and only because I see now from the bid that the. Bid was, the date of the bid they submitted was September fourteenth, twenty twenty. That. Do we think it would possibly make more sense for this. Term of the contract to start in September, to have started September fourteenth, twenty twenty? I mean. It's a, it seems a little strange if you went back and looked at it that we're, that we had, we were entering into a contract. A week before they bid on the work for which they were awarded the contract.
I thought it was an extension of the contract, but I don't know.
Um.
Maybe, maybe it's. I, I mean, it's, it's not a big deal, so if, if we don't wanna have to. Sort that out.
The original contract was entered into October first, two thousand nineteen, to twenty twenty to twenty. I'm not sure what you're saying.
Well, I'm just saying that. We're, we're. We're pretending that a contract started on September sixth of twenty twenty. And the bid that, I mean, I mean, I understand the, the contract part of it, but the contract is predicated on us having awarded that.
Yes, oh, 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 okay, I see what you're saying.
And they didn't submit the bid for plowing until September fourteenth.
September fourteenth, so we should change that.
So. Is there any reason we wouldn't maybe just change this to September fourteenth?
That, I will not change that, yes. Uh, the contract entered into this.
The other thing, and I guess this is a que, but I don't know, if you guys have. I mean, if they accepted this before, then I'm.
Yes.
Okay with it, but it does seem strange to me that they would be okay with accepting a contract until September of. The season after they no longer bid on the.
I think they bid as a three year.
No, they bid as, they bid as a two year, but they, but they, I mean, I, I don't wanna speak for Clark, but they, they, the. You know, when we put these out to bid, we always, the bid always says for the plowing season of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two or twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one. So.
But isn't there some language here saying that the select board may extend the contract? Uh, I thought I saw that.
Maybe, I mean, and again, if, if, if those guys have been fine with this and let's, then sorry, let's, we don't have to worry about it. It's, it's really only something that, it's really only something that would be a problem for them if they didn't like it. But I'm sure they thought, as we would, that we're not, that this wasn't intended to be something that was gonna.
Yeah, it was just.
It was just intended to give a little bit more definition around things in a intelligent way, so I, we don't need to worry about it. If, if they were fine with this, let's do the same.
And going forward, when we do have bids, we need to follow up with the contract, not just say even on the bid and then not give anybody any direction. So going forward, this will be sort of a profile, a standard, percy, policy procedure to, to review the contract after the bid is won, yes, Stan?
Uh, Gwen mentioned that she was under the impression, I think, that he's busy for two years.
They are two years.
Well, it, it says twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one, one year. So they need to maybe reissue these, or are you putting yourselves in a position where every year you gotta renegotiate?
No, I mean, they, they, but in fairness, when we put these out to bid, and this is how it's been in the past. We said you can bid on it for one year, or if you're interested, you could bid on it for two years. And in the bottom, they said they will hold the bid price for twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two if you choose to do it to.
Okay, okay.
And we did, we did vote to give that to word it to them for two years. So it is still going to be in effect for another.
Thank you for pointing that out.
Well, or no, well, we're now in the second.
We're in the second.
Right, yeah.
So.
Right.
All right, um. So with the change of the date to, uh, fe, uh, changing the date of the bid. Starting date from the sixth to the fourteenth. With that change, can, uh, can I get a mo?
Do you mind correcting typos?
Who?
Do you mind correcting any other typos?
You have typos to correct?
Yeah, Article six, you look at it and it says Article thirteen of this contract, there's only Article seven, it's top number.
Okay. Town speculative insurance showing all coverages as required by Article thirteen, oh, yeah. So, town speculative insurance. Showing all the coverages as required.
It may not be the probable. Uh, where does it address, uh, insurances? Unless there's.
Oh, here. There's a contract for services, the short form, the small contractors that the town normally gives, so this is in addition, this was backed onto here. I'm sorry, so, um, and I, let's make copies of this as well, Article thirteen is the termination of it. Sure, my, my mistake, this was, uh, that's where the other articles, it's the vendor contracts that all the vendors get.
The discipline is a work processor.
Yeah.
Um, excuse me, is, is there a, a date that I need to note here?
No, I would just, yeah.
We're just under discussion.
I would just say we're discussing minor updates to the. Contract for winter plowing.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right, so that goes to short form for small contracts, all right, so. Shall we, uh, table this to the next meeting so that everybody has a chance to review any changes, or how would you like to address, address this? Uh, if.
One, we check it.
Yeah, thank you, second.
Okay. All right, uh, David made a motion to table this item to the next meeting, Stan has seconded it. Uh, all those in favor of tabling the review of the contractual highway maintenance, um, until the next regular board meeting signify by saying aye. On a aye, any opposed? All right, we will table this to the next meeting so everybody has a chance to review it.
Not redoing the whole thing, but just the sentences that don't make sense, if I were, just wouldn't make a run to change and highlight it, L O or whatever. And send it down, so it goes into the, here, Bruce included, so you can look at it and then.
Sure.
Discuss that, make some.
So, very helpful, okay, thank you. Contracts are done, these here, all right, uh, so the, the question closer, okay. The Brookline Committee has met, uh, last night we met and, uh, we were reviewing over, um, invitations to bid. I did take what was presented, what the committee initially set up and changed it around and added some of the legalings to it. Uh, which I sent out by email where we talk about the, um. Reserving their right to reject any and all bids and such. Um.
Can I ask a question?
They don't, well, I'm just gonna say that we don't need to vote on this this evening, we're gonna wait until, oh, for the buildings commissioners here and then also for. Uh, any, if, if there were any other changes or concerns, so yes, go ahead, David.
No, I was just gonna suggest that we table this until the next meeting, because I, I don't think it makes sense to even discuss it at all without Bruce being.
Right.
And I was under the impression we weren't discussing it again until the second. I guess. Reason.
Um, yeah, maybe, I don't. Okay, because we were trying to shorten the, this meeting, however, I do want to pass out something to you.
Well, and I guess I wanna make sure that there's been a discussion with Carrie and Bruce and.
Stan, Stan came last night.
We, we discussed about, okay, so you guys have had a chance to, okay, that's all.
Yeah, right, this.
Oh, we should.
This was, um, passed out last night as well, I remember at one point we had asked the, um, the, the committee to come up with a list of things. Uh, you know, that they want to see get done, and so let's put this in addition to discussing the, um, other items, just. So, sort of a punch list of things that they would like to do in the future, including landscaping and ADA and such and, and, um. So it says presented to the September twenty twenty-one select board by Leanne, I don't remember.
No, I don't think we got that.
No, I don't think she, I don't.
We should have another year.
Yeah, so I think it was intended to be presented, but, um.
I didn't listen to any of it, I don't remember.
Yeah, I, I didn't listen to any of it, so, uh, so, um. This will be discussed again on the February second meeting, if that's okay, but I'll have some time to take a look at that and I'll. Save for, um, Bruce as well, so item E is tabled and item F is going to be tabled as well at this time. Okay, um, new business, any other new business to discuss? Anybody else, all right, so now we're gonna get into the report, town clerk report, what did, what, they didn't stand, that's down in, um, seven, seventy. I didn't know where it was. I guess, I don't know, um.
Yeah, that seems.
Uh, new business, okay, Guy Tans of Town, clerk report.
Um, the town clerk's office has been busy, we already started selling, uh, dog licenses. Uh, and obviously, we're going over the checklist to make sure that we're up to speed in regards to the upcoming, uh, Australian ballot, which was approved today by the governor. So, uh, moving forward, we'll be getting out ballots and, uh, absentee ballots will become available probably the first. Week in February or the second week at the latest, and, um, those wishing to have those absentee ballots need to contact the town clerk's office. Or you can go on the website and, uh, request it on the My Voter page, I believe. But right now, everything is, uh, all comprised into a ten-day window and we're doing our best to put everything together, but. Uh, we will survive, we did it last year, we'll do it again this year, the thing is that it's a little tighter this year because of the. Last minute approval of certain articles in regards to the ballots. But other than that, everything's good, Gwen's doing the, uh, working on the books, uh, digitizing the books and, um. It's been busy, there's been an uptick in, um, refinancing, uh, I've seen that, uh, it's been extremely busy, uh. So that's a good thing, I guess, for, for folks who are taking advantage of low interest rates and it makes the town office a little busier, but everything's running smoothly. And we're still doing, uh, you don't need an appointment to come in the office at this point, we're running the office as normal as we did, uh, before this COVID took place. Other than that, everything's good.
Thank you, Mr. Tans, for you, for all that you do, Glenn for helping us, you account for responsibilities.
You're welcome.
Do you feel you need a plexiglass thing on a guy or?
Did we what?
Do you have a need for a plexiglass shield?
Uh, no, to be honest with you, um, um, I'm, I'm pretty comfortable with, uh, those who wish to wear a mask.
I've been here, he doesn't love anybody. I've been here, he doesn't love anybody.
And those who don't wanna wear a mask, uh, it's, you know, eighty-five percent of the state has been vaccinated. And it's the owners of the people that tell us that, you know, you haven't been vaccinated. Um, it's, it's gotten pretty confusing, different camps, different feelings. And it's getting to be a free fall now, and that's unfortunate, but that's where we are. So. Hopefully we'll stay safe.
Okay, uh, we'll move on to my quick report, as a health officer and animal control officer, dogs versus ducks incidents. Um, the dogs that were not vaccinated were brought to Wyndham County Maine, they were vaccinated. Um, I did visit the dogs eleven days after the incident, they were in good health, no rabies. There's a paperwork form that's gonna be filed, be, be submitted and there'll be a folder in the office and I just need to get the, those dogs. Owners in here to actually now license them uh, properly. The second item, I did receive another dog bite call from Springfield Hospital, a residential um, uh, family. Friend of a family came into a home, the dogs rushed the door and the guy put his foot out to stop the dogs from going through and the dog bit the ankle. The next day it was sore, so he went to the hospital. Um, good news is that the uh, the dogs are registered and the dogs are up to date on the rabies vaccine, the one dog. Um, I did get a photograph of the dog, I will be going back to their house on January twenty eighth to make sure the dog is still healthy. Um, and I'll fill out the paperwork, it doesn't have to go anywhere but stay in house, so that's okay. Um, yeah, third item here, FEMA update, I am working with Mel and identifying some of the pictures and I'm gonna work with Mark. To figure out some of the pictures from the roads from the storm, just a little confusing because after a while. Uh, eroded roads all start moving the same after a while, but some of them, I can tell where they are, but a couple of them, I, I wasn't sure. Um, we did sign off on the eleventh. Uh, for FEMA, we've met the, the dates of all of our production in a row as far as FEMA goes and that means first, but right now we're just working on setting up projects and a site visit. For those roads that have not been fixed yet.
Awesome.
And I, I said it's a lot of snow, but I don't know, I said we can't do Platte Mountain, but we can do the other ones.
Yeah.
Alright, uh, building commissioners report, we're gonna pass on that because uh, Bruce is not here this evening. Any other reports, I know uh, Sammy wanted to talk a little bit about how the, the town is going to support the uh. Just thing, the SGP ideas.
Yeah, there's a, the, the committee, there's a, the original um, reapportionment map. Um, there was a lot of uh, resistance to it, so apparently they. Uh, have set up a committee, a government ops committee, my failure. Uh, to uh, go around and do a rework, they've done a rework, it's minor modifications here and there. It apparently takes a lot of the towns that were split in half, left them whole and, and juggle the surrounding towns to revise the map. Uh, but the issue regarding us and our town uh, is such that on the twenty seventh and twenty eighth of this month. That committee is going to hold meetings in Wyndham County. And I guess my question to the group is, rather than go off on my own and decide to do what a, an individual wants to do instead of a, as a group. And representing the town is, is there any feelings about uh, showing up there and reiterating the stuff that we said. At our discussion about reapportionment a few meetings ago when Mrs. Goldman's on uh, Zoom. I don't mind attending whichever one is convenient in time, based on any process of appointments to restate our position. If, if you felt necessary, it almost is a waste of time in a way, given the fact that they haven't changed, I mean. Everyone at the table at the time said they didn't think it would go very far, but it's really surprising for our small moment. It would seem to me that we could be lumped with someone else that has a lot in common with us.
Right.
Right.
Westminster, and I think the latest is all a part of Rockingham too.
Well, yeah, no, just the southern part of uh, the south part, the south portion of.
The original one shut down.
Right.
You look at the territory, the new one, it's, I, I can't tell if it goes all the way to the top of Rockingham. Or, or split it, which is not what they wanted to do in the first place, so.
Yeah.
There is a change, but it's uh, it's still got a slum of someone on the inside of that.
Um, I mean, I guess. I would say, and just. If somebody can refresh my memory, that discussion that we had was actually Board of Civil.
Exactly, I was gonna.
So it was more than just us, but I'll say as a member of the Board of Civil Authority. Stan, if, if you have the time and the energy and the willingness to go to a meeting with them to. Uh. Express the same concerns that you so eloquently expressed to them previously. I would think that would be great, I would appreciate it if you could do that. And I don't, though it might be, might not make any difference, it would still be good for us to express the concerns we have again. Cause, cause they're giving any opportunity to.
I think we should send them uh, an email out to all the members of the Board of Civil Authority. And with what we just said right now, and uh, get a consensus of what their thinking is and then uh, move from there. But uh, I am certainly in uh, in concert with doing that because uh, you know, i- if you don't say anything, then you have enough.
Right.
Whereas if you say something, at least you might get an answer.
I, I personally, I, I get the sense that because we're small, we get taken advantage of in a way that they don't care what we feel or how we look at it. We'll just put this with them, you know, and it, it didn't make sense, we want the Bellas Falls and remember.
Well, they're following the formula and they're doing it best they can.
What are we doing, it makes no sense. I never said it, it isn't for.
Oh, yeah. Um, I, I agree with you, it, it's an unfortunate situation, but it's what we have to deal with and um, it goes on and on like this all the time. It's politically motivated, it's, it's got so many different things involved with it, but uh, yeah.
Okay.
So if you would generate an email to all the members of the Board of Civil Authority, which is the justice of the peace, um, the select board. And myself as the town clerk and also uh, you know, on Board of Civil Authority. And then we'll just ask for, you know, some feedback. And um, what's the date of that meeting, I forgot the date of that.
They, they've indicated it's the twenty seventh and twenty eighth.
Is that gonna be a Zoom or?
Uh, I don't know, they did indicate that, but I'm gonna find out.
Alright.
I was hoping to do that for tonight, but I just didn't get to it. So within the next, it's probably tomorrow or Friday, I will find out where and how it's gonna happen.
The best, the best we can do is alert everybody on the Board of Civil Authority. And the worst is that so, if no one responds, we still, you know, have a consensus of what you wanna do.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's worth noting, at that meeting. It was, I think unanimous agreement with the points that Stan had raised.
Oh, yes, absolutely.
About the various reasons that I think we were unanimously thought that this was a bad move, so. I can't imagine that everyone wouldn't be supportive of expressing it again, but to Guy's point, it, it makes sense to just.
So when I, when I hear the email, do you want me to send it to somebody for, you know, look see an approval first?
Well, I'm gonna, also, I'd like to call the Secretary of State, if we can do that. Because uh, it's open meeting law and if we have a meeting, it may require that we call. A meeting to, you know, an emergency Board of Civil Authority meeting, uh, I just wanna just touch base with them.
Yeah.
Um, and make sure that we're doing everything in, in the right way.
Right.
Um.
Hopefully that other vote will stand and allow us to have them if we choose to proceed and actually act on it, but.
Yes.
Maybe we do need a second, who knows, you know, I'm glad you're finding out that we'll.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just gonna, I'm gonna, I'll call him tomorrow.
You're calling, so?
Yeah, call, yeah, remind me to call Secretary.
Well, you're calling the Secretary of State for a candidate file participation form.
Right.
And?
To see if we, BCA can hold a meeting or can we do it via email, which I know he's gonna say it's an open meeting law, you know, we have to, we have to. Uh, abide by the rules of open meetings, because it's gonna be more than two or three of us talking about it.
Can BCA Zoom?
Yeah, I'll just, yeah, just put the, you know, BCA meeting in regards to the uh, um, appropriate, the uh, redistricting. And we're making sure that if we have to have an emergency meeting, even if we have the emergency meeting, we could do that by Zoom.
Yeah.
So we could still do it like time without having to be more busy.
Thank you for your time and everything.
Yeah.
But the select board members that are present here are.
Yeah.
So I should, hopefully I should have an answer for you sometime tomorrow. And I'll leave them.
Thank you, and I'll try to get my stuff done in a second.
Okay. Good.
Thank you very much.
Alright, who's supervisor, Everett Markville?
Okay.
Oh.
Um, since the last meeting, uh. We applied more crushed stone over the areas of spreading that occurred during our last stop. Other than white area of town on all roads. Um. That worked well for the one day. Road maintenance. And since then our roads have froze back up and um. When I had the grader out, uh, trucks were spreading the stone over the areas I uh, took them to. And uh, the trucks were following me from uh, area to area. And one of the truck drivers noticed the bulge on one of the tires.
Oh no.
On the back, so it's holding air, it's not hindering, but it, it's like a hernia about size of, of a top ball. Coming out from the inside of the tire on the back, so um. You know, I, I was holding off putting the wing on because it's a tire that needs to be changed before the wing goes on. Wings nope out. Um, I made contact with uh. The last people that uh, put tires on the grader and they're very good service. Um, the tires on the grader at this point probably have another year left in them. Uh, there's between a quarter to half inch of actual tread on the, on all the tires. And you're not supposed to put one new one against a worn one because bad tires have a cyclical chain and duty. That powers, you can lock the front set with the back set in the, in situations of traction, so. Um. I spoke with the. The, the. Coworker there at uh, Chesterfield Tire. They have a used tire, very similar, uh, we're playing phone tag back and forth about. Uh, the brand, is, is it bias fly or radial? So I've gathered information and give it to him, so he's supposed to be getting back to me with the price. And what I'm in hopes is they can find something quite comparable. To change right on the grader without pulling the wheel off, they can just unlock the tire, there's a, there's a beaded rim steel. That's pried off, then there's a rubber O-ring, about size of my finger that seals, it's a tubeless tire. So they can actually come here, we'll, we'll raise the grader up with blade. Uh, pull the old tire off, put a new used tire in place and be back in business and just.
Can I ask the questions, you know, how much they run?
He's uh, supposed to be getting back to me with the, the price for coming here and I, I told him that it, you know, if he could. Figure it into coming when he's out on the road, cause they do it every day.
Hmm.
To come here and help us out, so he said he could probably come to us very easily. Uh, he had an appointment, he comes up to the West River Bus. Regular change tires and uh, he could fit us in and, and. So he didn't tell me that they have a tire, but it depends on what.
Type.
What kind of benefit that is.
What is on the, bias?
Bias, yeah, yeah. And uh, Mayport twelve has been on seven years, uh, nicely.
Don't, don't set aside money?
We do.
Okay, for the, for the hour.
It's money, so I'm pretty sure we're covered, I, I can't imagine the price would be. More than three hundred. You know, to, to send a truck with a used tire, put it on.
Not, not to contradict you, but I, I would be prepared to spend up to six hundred dollars.
Yeah, yeah, that's.
Okay, I used to own a tire store.
Oh, okay.
We didn't sell tires for that kind of equipment, but back then.
I know that.
Three twenty, four fifty, no problem for a new one.
Yeah.
Today I expect it to be much more.
Sure.
And if it's a used tire and then they're coming out and taking things on and off.
Yeah.
Uh, they're, they're gonna be there enough time that they're gonna have some kind of billing for that, so. I can bear on that thinking in terms of large, but you, you're doing a good job backing down.
Well, yeah, you know, uh, it, it turns out this guy is a guy that I, I went to high school with that, uh, he's been. In Massachusetts in the tire business and the, the guy. Normally was at this Chesterfield Tire retired. And they brought this young guy out to fill in the position and so, uh, he's gonna get back to me, so is that a, uh. You know, if it comes out to be six, seven hundred, is that a price you want me to finish to the quarter or should I?
No, I think you do it.
Uh, I think, I think it's over five hundred that it's, that it needed comes to four, I believe.
No.
No, no, I think it's.
Thousand to a thousand?
No, I, I have a purchase policy back there.
On the wall too.
Yeah. Yeah, that's a regular purchase.
It's a thousand, you know, I had no problem.
Up to a thousand, I believe.
Really, other thing, it, it sounds like, are the front wheels in that chains serious?
No, they're uh, they're the same tire, same.
Mm-hmm.
Enough, same size numbers, uh, but they're um, hydraulic power in the front, they're optional.
Thousand?
Perfect, it's a nice purchases then, or?
I, I, I feel. Comfortable that it would be under that, like.
Yeah, and the other thing is, just as a word, um, having had some experience with passenger tires with that scenario. That could pop at any time.
Yeah, yeah, even just in the grader, yeah, and it's not just one bulge, it's, it's got like five started.
Oh, you're kidding, I'll take some pictures, I'm gonna see this.
So the inside of the tire must be coming apart.
Yeah, yeah, that, that sounds like it, that'll be done sooner than later.
Yeah, I mean. If we keep getting snow, it definitely will have to go out and, and put back snow brakes or something that.
Yeah.
If we could match the tire up, if we got it through for a year, maybe two.
I guess what I was leading up to though, is one last comment, is if, if he doesn't have a used one and this one starts leaking air or whatever. We better change it, would it be possible to take the used one off the front? And place the one that's bad and have the new tire put on the front with that rim from the one you just removed? So it wasn't, won't cause a gear grinding scenario that you're worried about?
I'm thinking the wheels are different, the wheel itself are different.
Different size and everything?
The back because of the hydraulic uh. Powering.
Yeah.
Uh, uh, the wheel fits over a hub on the front and the back is just.
Different kind of gear?
Yeah.
Frontal back is different, yeah.
Okay, that's kind of what, that's what you can do.
But he was uh, certain he could match up the used one, the wheel easy for us, so. Um, I'm sure that the price of tires will be up, you know, everything else is going up and uh. So, uh, but anyway, uh, that was with the grader, um. I called Mark Pickering to, to talk about the topic of. Uh, closing, cutting mountain road down for winter travel and. We got into a lengthy conversation about, uh, you know, what class is the road? Uh, is it class three for the top, which I'm assuming it is, going from one town to another. As a class three road. He thought that it was our obligation to maintain the road. A year round, but as far as I can, you know, since I've worked through the town, it's always been, it was in the winter.
Same thing with Ellenware.
Same with Ellenware, and as we talked, Newfane has similar, they have steepway road that goes. From down there to the dump road up to uh, Newfane Hill.
Yeah, to the.
And they actually closed that down and they do put up a barricade and signs, um. So he recommended due to the, you know, safety wise that we did close the road. Uh, we talked about, you know, legal statutes about closing road and. He was gonna gather some information about the statutes of uh. Closing the road and classifications and he says uh. You know, you could. Way it out, but if you turn the road into a class four, you could definitely shut it down, but you. But you lose your state aid money that comes, so uh then you could legally close it. But you still have to maintain it, you could maintain it to your specs that you want, but because it goes from one town to another, there's a process. So uh anyway, he said to go ahead, I I went up before storms and and put up stuff. I I found some older signage, I hadn't, I didn't order nothing. Um I thought use what we had for now and come up with the proper. Signs, but I added a a stop sign at each end of our closed section. I also added a three foot by four foot road closed.
Mm-hmm.
Up over um on top, I put it up over, I took the ladder lined up. Screwed it above our no maintenance from October, excuse me.
Summer.
Uh.
Summer, same, thank you.
So it's it's obvious, that was at dusk, so it reflected on the one. Now on the left side, I also put a a basic uh road closed triangle. With a small orange plaque that says no through traffic. So I think that covers us. Um barriers, you know, they're definitely road, they they'll stop you. But from experience in the past here, every time we put out a barrier. The people would work.
Somebody moved.
So they move or 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 drive over.
Yeah.
Um I don't think there's anything, I mentioned maybe reflective barrels, you know. But at the top of the mountain, Archie didn't think they would last, somebody would take.
Somebody would take them or shoot them off or.
Yeah, the last signs we I replaced had been shot up um. So I think having road closed stop and I put them up high enough, so if they want them, they're gonna have to earn them.
That's true.
But definitely I created a line, I turned around, I came back and I stopped and. I think that covers us for.
Yeah, Mark and I agree my thing, I'm like, I had just written to Mr. Harlow from a Putney Road supervisor. Over there and and asked him about putting up a sign like we had said. Um and I shared it with Mark and Mark and sent, he communicated and showed me what he had done that day as well, so. We're we're set right now, but we haven't been rolling if we wanted to follow up.
I mean, I I drove up, it was before this big storm. And there was some loose snow that I stayed in for traction and I had no problems. Where it had been driven on was compacted and you could tell it would be, you know, a little slick if you were speeding or weren't paying attention. But I think we're covered and when spring gets here, I can back the screws out and and take the closed signs down.
That's great.
Stop sign and then we can.
That's great.
You know what, Mark Pickering, um I also, when I tried to find the orange handbook. Um I believe it's in the file cabinet here, I tried to find it online. To go in and see if I could find actual, you know, footage that tells about the process of closing down. Uh there's gotta be a lot of towns in Vermont that have it. I did find one phone number and I called uh up to Barry, it was. Petrians uh headquarters and. I explained my situation and they gave me the phone number for our area and. It was a Jim Ryan's number, I called the secretary. She wanted to know the question, so I I said, what's our legal rights to close class three road? And on my, when I got home tonight, I checked my messages and. Mark Pickering called me back, so I went in circle, came back.
We referred back to.
Yeah, yeah, because these are district uh.
Right.
Petrians, so um I will contact Mark again and he said, you know. Do whatever we had to do to get it uh, you know, safer with the signage. You know, a a new thing has plastic uh reflective uh. But I think it all depends on. If you have stuff out and uh, you know, nobody to monitor.
It's gotta get stolen, yeah.
You know, anything that's near a road or it is, so I think the signs are best that.
Yeah, great, you made an attempt.
Yeah, and and Mark will, I'm sure will get back to us on legal statues on that. If not, I will get back with him um.
I have the orange book on my computer at home, the most recent one.
Okay.
If you would like me to email it to you, I'd be happy to do that.
All right, I I started to uh look down through to see what I needed for a download, but. Um I was thinking there may be.
I have a copy of.
Copy in the top that does this, so yeah, I'll I will. I will uh, if I don't find it here, Stan, I will definitely uh. Catch up with you on that.
Make email to Doc then.
Yes, because I borrowed it and then I brought it back, yeah.
And I guess that was about all for this.
All right, you can thank you sir for what you do.
Oh, I did just one other thing, that's important, but. We did get a third load of salt, we're on our third third truck load of salt and they did replenish the sand again.
Mm-hmm.
You know, the last couple, the little storms eat it right up, you know, it takes just as much on the little storms. As it is after you clean up the big ones, so. Um we are on our third load, I I called. Almost eight o'clock one morning and at one o'clock the truck driver uh called to confirm. His destination and uh. Much to lower than shit, did a good job.
Looks like you're pretty thorough, I had had to go up Athens Road last Friday. I can see every spot where you had.
Yeah, so.
Set it down.
Yeah, yeah, I was hoping that we would get enough weather to uh freeze it down so the clouds don't begin to. Move this area, but I think now we're in good shape. And when I go back with the grader, I can bring it back into the center of the road. Yeah, there's there's quite a few places on the Athens Road uh. We did quite a few on Whitney Hill, again, the Kirsch Road. Is always uh, the minute we get a saw, that one goes, lucky, uh Putney Mountain. Um for some reason, Ellenware Road stays really well.
Hmm.
I don't know if it's the material gravel, sand.
Mm-hmm.
Under the road, but it tends to stay well.
So is that part of the way over to the town side, Ellenware Road?
No, just up to the last town, yeah.
Same thing at Putney now, we just did the last town.
Yeah, same thing. And uh and again, people will use it as a shortcut for just fun travel, but um. Every town must have them and people will use them as much as they can.
All right, well, thank you, Mark.
Thanks.
Sure.
And I I did write a thank you note to ASCL for recent storm road maintenance, everything, nice job and all work, happy with everything, so that's good. Okay, I'll move on then to communications, um. One piece that says regular mail, I picked up from the box, it said, it's a mounted town health officer. Interesting thing, I just wanted to see, okay, Governor Scott signed into law Act thirty eight, which amends. Thirteen V S A three fifty one, the changes in the state law affects the authority of the town health officer. As of July first, twenty twenty one, humane office, humane officers authorized to conduct animal cruelty investigations. Must have certain types of law enforcement designated humane society employees or animal control officers who receive specialized. Animal cruelty investigation training pursuant to statute twenties, uh. Town health officers are no longer categorized as humane officers unless they are otherwise employed by a humane society, goes on and on. And explains how complaints or reports of animal cruelty should be passed. When the town health officer receives that, they should pass it on to the humane officer or sheriff department, deputy, constable, police officer, states, you know, so on so forth. Um now, I did take a training at the state police department um with Nancy Libby. I have the certificate of my training for level one animal cruelty, I don't know how it is, I haven't. But but I uh, that was a regular mail and I'm gonna follow up and see what responsibilities since I'm both ACO and a huge town health officer. So that was the only hard copy mail that I I had to review. Um. Email. The only email that I was sending back and forth besides things that came from the government or whatever was the sign request to Putney, which we we just talked about. But neither anything else, anybody else, I guess that's about it. All right, so we go to pay orders at this time, payroll warrant. I would like to make a motion to approve payroll warrant. Twenty-two dash twenty-eight. Dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. In the amount of one thousand seven hundred nine dollars and eighty-nine cents, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by stand and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving payroll mark twenty-two dash twenty-eight. For one thousand seven hundred nine dollars and eighty-nine cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None, I'm gonna sign this and pass this around. I'd like to make a motion that we approve the uh accounts payable warrant number twenty-two dash twenty-nine. Dated January nineteenth, twenty twenty-two. In the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred seven dollars and forty-three cents, may I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by stand and discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor of approving accounts payable warrant twenty. Uh twenty-two dash twenty-nine in the amount of sixteen thousand nine hundred seven dollars and forty-three cents, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed, any extensions, if my motion passes, I'll pass this around. Oh, I'm going to go back to communications for one second for an email, I just noticed on my email, it came tonight. Uh at seven twenty-five from the auditors. And he sent to everyone, but it says. The elected auditors have reviewed the financial statements as of six thirty twenty-one and have prepared the attached consolidated balance. For the town report, so it's in our email, please note that the general fund has a surplus. Of two thousand one hundred fifty-three dollars. And the highway fund has a deficit of sixty-two thousand two hundred fifty-four dollars for the period ending six thirty twenty-one. Goes on to say, the general fund has had an ending fund balance of seventy-eight thousand one hundred forty-eight dollars. And the highway fund had an ending fund balance of one hundred and fifty-one thousand nine hundred fifty-two dollars. All of the other funds are solvent as indicated in the attached document. Once the question relating to the reconciliation of IRS nine four one reportedly reports to the town salary expense accounts is addressed for the period ending six thirty twenty-one. We can finish our audit work and provide an audit letter for the town report. If the variance is unexplained, then we can add it as an audit finding in our letter to be addressed to the current fiscal year. Please let me know if you have any questions, Frank Hightower. What he is referring to is that there is a two thousand five hundred dollar. Payroll item that is not attributed to any one person, however, from their research, they do believe it belongs to the. Delinquent tax collector's salary, so whether they didn't do. The W nine's right or whatever, you you might want to reach out to them to try and.
Yeah, I'm not sure what that is, uh I I'd have to see what they, you know, what they're talking about.
Okay, so we did, so I'll just say that that was in.
Cause I don't do payroll, I just submit the payroll.
Right, well, yeah, you just, but it, okay, I don't know what to say. So we did get his email though, just.
I think that might be a question for Mike. Uh because he does the payroll and it it appears that maybe. They didn't move. Some delinquent tax fees, you know, salaries or, I I don't know.
Okay, so I will, I will share this with Mike and see if I can talk to him about it, thank you very much, but that was in the under emails, it was a letter received tonight.
But they're showing a deficit for the highway fund for the year ending six twenty-one. As six thou, I mean, um eighty, sixty-two thousand dollars.
Is that from the paving?
Which we knew, we knew that.
The paving.
It's largely because, well, I mean. But then we got rent for it. Yeah, I mean, this is, this is what happens, I mean, we don't, we only budget, I think we talked about this, we budget thirty thousand dollars a year. Yeah, right. But we spend a hundred thousand, whatever, so actually. Like, and I think we talked about this in a previous meeting.
Mm-hmm.
The the rest of the highway budget actually came in under budget. If we're only sixty-two thousand. In the hole in that fund after the year, this is what happens every time we pave.
And the highway fund has any fund balance of over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Right. I mean, if you go back and look at the last time we paved. Yeah. The fiscal year will have reflected the same thing. Okay. I I'd have to, I'll I'll take a look at it as well, I'm just curious, it's.
I'll send you the email, like.
So a question that needs to be asked. Then um.
What we do about that?
Really would have been nice if we'd had this information a little earlier. Um the highway, my understanding is that, you know, the highway budget, we can carry a deficit or surplus. And we can just roll that over from year to year and that's fine, but we're not able to have a deficit or a surplus in the general fund. Right. Over a certain amount, there must be some tolerance where. We don't have to, in, I mean, I made the example last time, that if, you know, if we end up with a surplus of nine dollars at the end of the year. Surely, we are not obligated to have that included in our warning. That we're going to return the nine dollars to the taxpayers.
Mm-hmm.
I don't know if twenty-one fifty-three is an amount such that we need to either. That we need to factor that into the warning, which we unfortunately have now approved and potentially are gonna have to have a special meeting to revise. Someone needs to find that out and advise us on that.
Who would I find that out from?
Uh the Secretary of State or the B L C T, either one of them will have to support it or call tomorrow.
Okay. Whatever, all right, and and uh we, a surplus like that, I would like to see it moved back into one of our smaller collection accounts, like we were talking about before. We did that in a previous year, but, all right, well, that is part of the mail, I will talk to tomorrow and work from bar on up. B L T C and then Secretary of State if I don't get an answer, um. All right, interesting. All right, moving on to the next item, looks like we need to have a short special meeting. Next week again, I'm I'm sure we all are of weekly meetings, um. But we need to do a wee, a special meeting on the twenty-sixth of January. Right, for voting on the surplus and the auditors.
Well, I mean, I gotta be honest, no, we need to do it sooner than.
Oh, okay.
I mean, I'm uh. I I'm, oh.
Well, you booked.
I'll express more of my frustration after this is no longer being recorded.
Okay.
But I'm not doing this repeatedly, week after week. Um because numbers that should have been figured out. Well, done. Four months ago, got figured out at seven forty-five tonight. four months ago, got figured out at seven forty five tonight. Um, so I, we need to have an answer of what we have to do and then we can talk about when we meet. I, I don't know when I'm gonna be available.
Okay. All right, um, the next regular meeting will be scheduled on February second. We will talk at that time about the administration of the Zoom informational meeting. We all have to. The ballot is needed by February eighth, so we have to cover the ballot on February second. Informational hearing details, okay, um. I think that was, I think I wrote that three times in two different spaces. Um, finalize the informational hearing.
We tabled several things.
Oh, and then we. Oh, then we tabled.
The contract for highway, for plowing and the RFP discussion for the.
And the RFP. Okay. So the highway, the contract, the RFP from the Brooklyn Meeting House, the informational Zoom meeting, uh, information and ballots. Right, anything else? We'll have to, we'll, we'll, I'll send out an email once I find out from Samo, find out a little bit more about how to deal with this. All right, um, if there's nothing else, I'd like to make a motion that we adjourn this evening's meeting.
Second.
Seconded by Stan, any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adjourned this evening's meeting, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. And the meeting, the motion is passed, the meeting is adjourned, the time is eight thirty eight PM.